Hammond City Council, come to order, please stand, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come before you just saying, Lord, thank you for another day. We ask that you give us grace because we know your grace is sufficient, Lord. We ask that you give us peace because we need peace of mind, Lord. We ask for all these blessings in your son, Jesus' name, we pray, amen. Okay, Carmen, roll call. Here.
Spitali.
Here.
Vanez.
Here.
Calwinski.
Here.
Salinas.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Henehosa.
Here.
Oh Pinker.
Here.
Number three, reading of minutes.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
I'd like to make the motion to accept the minutes from today's. So move.
Motion on the floor by Councilman Spitali to accept the minutes, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Bananas, all is in favor?
Aye.
Pose. And pass. Number four, approval of claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims, September 5th through September 19th for council meeting, September 24th, 2012, beginning with claims dated 9/7/12 and ending with claims dated 9/19/12, claim number 4142 through claim number 4405, for a total of $4,454,380.38. I so move.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I have two amendments, claim number 4406, $202,000 Valparaiso University, that's for college bound tuition, and claim number 4407, Pinkerton Oil Company, $222,654.94. That's for services for gas for May, June, July, and August, I so move.
Second.
Is amended on the claim, but Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs, is there any discussion? Any discussion on the amendment? Carmen, roll call, vote on the amendment.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henehosa.
Yes.
Oh Pinker.
Yes.
Amendment to the claims passes nine to zero. Now on the approval of claims as written. Roll call, vote on the claims.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henehosa.
Yes.
Oh Pinker.
Yes, claims pass nine to zero. Now number five will open up the public hearing. 2013 Hammond City Civil Budget Proposal, 1244, 2013 Hammond Sanitary District Budget Proposal, 1245, 2013 Hammond Redevelopment Budget Proposal, 1246, and 2013 Hammond Public Library Budget Proposal, 1247. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
With respect to the public library discussion, I don't know if I'm accurate in this, but I had the distinct impression that, I'll say it like it is, I got the distinct impression you guys were kind of writing Russia on the library, and I said it only because they are a separate taxing district, and I understand that statutes authorize you now to, I guess, scrutinize, review, I guess pass, I don't know, maybe you've taken it to passing judgment on their budgets. I, I don't know, I just felt that they know more about their budget than you guys do. You're coming in there cold, and about the only real issue was should they default and close down or what have, what have you, that who would be responsible for that outstanding $7 million bond? But I just, I just wonder, you guys aren't going overboard with your authority here on some of this stuff, that's all.
Would anyone else like to speak? Anyone like to speak?
Good evening, my name is Pat Deering, and I'm the president of the local 1448 that represents staff at the Hammond Public Library. I'm here tonight, I've also worked at the library for over 20 years. I'm here tonight to talk about the library and things that we do for the city of Hammond. First of all, I want to say that in 2004, there were 77 employees at the library. This year, 2012, there's 44. That's 33 positions that have been lost since 2004, in eight short years. The union has worked very closely with management, we have doubled up, we have done two people's work, and we have gone without raises. While we did that, we service the city of Hammond. People come to us to fill out resumes. There is not one job that you can go to that will accept an application without a resume. People come to us who have never sat in front of a computer. I remember one gentleman who came to me and asked me if I would help him, he was a construction worker, he had worked in construction for 20 years and lost his job, and he had to sit on a computer that he had never looked at before and make a resume. I remember this man so well because he was big and, and just all muscle, and tears was in his eyes because he didn't know what he was going to do, and he didn't know how he was going to feed his family. Unemployment, people have to apply for their unemployment online, on computers, and believe it or not, everybody in the city of Hammond does not have a computer in their home, but the unemployment office really don't care. You want your unemployment, you better find a computer to put in for it. We have people who go to college online, people who are going back to school because they've lost their jobs, and the only way for them to get another job is to get an education. So they go to college online, but again, they have no job and they cannot afford a computer, so they come to the Hammond Public Library and go on the computer for free and take classes. We have a lot of Phoenixes out there, if you guys have saw that commercial. Sometimes businesses who put applications, take applications from people require background checks, and they don't want to, the business doesn't want to pay for the background check, so they make people come in and do their own background checks. Again, they're on the second floor at the Hammond Public Library doing that. Some people have to give their driver's license records to get a job, they have to come to us to look that up. And believe it or not, Hammond Police Department send people to the Hammond Public Library to go online for their gun permits. And that's just the things we do with computers. We have a youth services department, we have reading programs for young people, we have programs where young parents can bring their younger children in. Some of the children in Hammond come to the Hammond Public Library and stay there until their single mom gets off work and can pick them up. It's a place for children to go that they can feel safe. We have a teen room with a lot of teen programs, and some of the council people have came there and saw our teen room. It gives the teens something to do after school, it keeps them off the street. These are just some of the things that you can find at the Hammond Public Library. If you think 20 people can run a library that size, come and look and see how busy we are. See how many people are waiting for those computers, see how many people are being helped with the 44 people we have left. As I was sitting here tonight, I went through and I tried to go through the list to find out how many Hammond people worked at the Hammond Public Library, excuse me, Hammond Public Library. Over half of the people that work at the library live in Hammond. And when the layoffs come, guess where the Hammond people are located? Most of them are going to be on that layoff list. And so, there we are again, having people in Hammond with no jobs, no way to pay their mortgages, no way to take care of their families. So before you make your vote, I ask you to please think about the services that we'll lose. Number one, if we have to close the one and only library we have, and I've heard consolidation, oh, consolidate with Lake County, do you really believe that if we consolidated with Lake County, our patrons would get the service that they deserve from us? Do you really think Lake County out there really cares about the people of Hammond? I'm just asking you to think about that and vote with your conscience. We're not asking you just for the library, we're asking you for the city of Hammond, because the library makes it a better place to live, it helps keep children safe, and it gives them an education. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
I hate to interrupt the public hearing, I wanted to shed some light, it seems like we had about a 45-minute conversation about this issue in caucus, which was open to the public, but I realized not everybody from the public was there, and I think it would probably be helpful if we sort of shed light on some of the things that we talked about back in the, in the caucus chamber, because, you know, I, I know the, the last speaker talked a little bit about consolidation, and that was talked about back there, and then the first speaker that talked about what happened back there, I'm not sure if I was at the same meeting as him, because it seemed like when we walked out of that chamber, even the staff of the library that was making their proposal to the council seemed happy with the way it developed. I, I thought it developed in a real positive manner. If I may summarize, we all agreed, I think just about every council person and the mayor agreed, that it's very important for all of us to do what we can to keep the Hammond Public Library and downtown Hammond open. I don't think that's a point of contention with anybody. You know, what is pending before the council at this point is an ordinance that the library is seeking above and beyond what they, what they drew last year in their tax levy. In Lake County right now, every, every library in Lake County outside of Hammond, Gary, East Chicago, and Whiting are county libraries, Crown Point, Griffith, Highland, Calattonship, Hobart, Lake Station, St. John, Sherrville, Maryville, Munster, Cedar Lake, Lowell, Winfield. There's about 13 libraries in Lake County that are run by a Lake County Library System, and the Lake County Library System has about, around a $13 million budget. So 13 library branches for around $13 million. And if you look at Hammond, we won one library with a budget, what they're requesting is 2.6, 3.6 million, which is $3 million per branch compared to what Lake County averages is about $1 million per branch, and if you look at the tax rate, it's literally one-third less if you're a Lake County resident. They pay 8.39 cents for every $100, if you're a Lake County, if you live in Highland and you have access to the Lake County Library Highland Branch, you pay 8 cents for $100 to maintain that library system. In Hammond, the proposal that's pending before you would raise that rate to 22 cents, three times higher. So for us, Hammond residents, to walk into a building that says Hammond Public Library, we're being penalized three times as much as somebody in Highland that walks into a Highland Branch, you know, the most important thing for me is to make sure that that branch stays open. That's the most important. And if we could save hundreds of thousands of dollars by consolidating with Lake County, I think it's something that definitely needs to be looked into, and I offered in, in the caucus that I would spearhead this with the legislature, and I think we'll, I think we have a pretty successful chance to consolidate, saving a lot of money and keeping our library branch open. This, this really hasn't been discussed, it hasn't been approached with, with the legislature as far as I know. So I walked out of that room very happy, actually, I thought that things were heading in the right direction, so I wanted to sort of shed, shed some light on that, you know, before we get into the, the rest of the speakers, just so everybody's on the same page. So thank you for allowing me that time, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone else wishing to speak? Would anyone else like to speak?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I think you better make it imperative here, I mean, I congratulate the mayor for coming up and saying that, because here's the case, what was talked about in that back room, nobody knows anything about, and he brought everything on the table and let you know, and administrators from the library, if you have anything to say now, now's the time to say it, that, you know, some type of agreement was reached in that caucus room. That needs to be said, and, you know, the lady that got up and talked about it, I mean, that makes a lot of sense and everything, you know, a lot of us didn't probably know that, I, I knew it, but, you know, what, you weren't there in that other meeting, and the, and the mayor did a good thing by coming forth to say this is what we talked about and everything. Now, if there's administrators from the, the library, Miss Greenleaf, or the financial analyst, if Lunda Swisher's here, now's the time to say it and everything and all of that, but, you know, they're, they're trying to work it out, and the recommendation in that room there was to go ahead and defeat it and let them go with the 2012 budget and see what happens, and that's probably what's going to happen. So if you're going to get up to that microphone and plead and say these are the reasons why, you're, you're almost talking like on deaf ears, because what was said already and the decision was made, I mean, just letting you know, and the mayor's bringing that to light and letting everybody know that it's not a slam dunk, but it was talked about, and it needs to be brought out here, and that's what he's doing, and that's what he did, just so you know what's going on. But I'm sure that there's a lot of other people here from the library that, that go there and use it and everything, and, you know, just like Councilman Heneyosa, you know, I took the tour and saw everything what's needed and all of that, and it puts this council in a, in a predicament, because this is the first time we have to approve it, and the bottom line says they're asking for $800,000, and if we approve that, or we don't approve it, then what's going to happen with the bond and so forth, and that's what's trying to be worked out, and that's what the mayor's bringing to light here and letting everybody know, so just so everybody knows we're all on the same page here. And what's going to happen is that budget is going to be defeated, the new one, and it's going to go back to 2012. And if I said something wrong, or somebody doesn't understand it, you know, now's the time to get up and ask a question, because that's a public hearing, that's what this is all about.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Just to echo and piggyback on what Councilman Markovich said, in caucus, we discussed a number of issues as it relates to the Hammond Public Library, what could happen, what possibly could happen, and the mayor stated to us in caucus that, you know, no one wants to have the library closed, he gave his facts and figures, there were questions and discussion back and forth on both sides, and what we came to a conclusion is that at some point, and I don't know if it starts tomorrow or late on this evening or whatever, that we need to go downstate and address the state legislators in, in regards to this particular issue. But no one wants to see the Hammond Public Library closed, we know the many benefits that it provides to the citizens of Hammond, and it's imperative that we keep it in place, and so that was my concern, and also my concern was in caucus, the $7 million bond, that was my main concern, and who would be responsible if, for some reason, that the library would close. And so after hearing both sides, and, and agreement was made, and, and the mayor promised to me that he would work with the library in caucus, and, and all of my colleagues heard as well, is that we, we kind of are in the place of saying, hey, let's see what happens, let's try to move forward and try to change the legislative body in, in terms of addressing this particular issue. We don't know if in the future if the optional income tax is going to come in place, so that would give additional revenue, so there are some things that's still available that may happen to alleviate this issue, but right now, this, this particular body doesn't really have the resources to say yes.
Next speaker.
I want to speak to the issue of what we discussed in the caucus, and I agree with what was said, that it was mentioned in this caucus, and as I said, and I believe that it would be accurately placed on the record, that I needed to go back and speak with my board regarding this matter. I feel with respects to this library, that the information that you're looking at and the numbers that you're looking at are one thing, the library is a totally different matter. What we are asking for from this city council, and what we had been requested to do, was to have you approve our budget, because it exceeded 2.8 million, number one, and number two, our board members are appointed, they are not elected. So we had to come before you to have this budget approved. As I said in the meeting, some of the individuals we called to sit down and talk about what we needed at the library never showed up, never answered our calls. The issue is that we have the money from the levies that we have gotten, all we need is for that to be approved. And at this meeting, I took away, and forgive me, if I'm wrong, that I took away that, no, we cannot do this, we cannot approve this budget, we need to revert you back to your 2012 budget, and we'll work with you to figure out how we're going to consolidate you into the Lake County Public Library System. I said at that meeting, I say again, Lake County and Hammond are two different library systems, there is no legal ramification for consolidation, there's only merger, and the two boards have to agree. Lake County has several branches to their library systems, they outsource materials, but they also have a larger revenue than Hammond has. So you're not comparing apples to apples. There's more to the library than just money. There's more to this library, it is a bedrock in this community. I understand that gaming monies and other resources cannot be thrown at Hammond Public Library, but I also understand the need of this library in this community. I understand what my staff does in this library for this community. From 2007 until the present day, our, our levies and the monies that we received have been approximately 3.6 million. We have never had the city where anybody else have to come in and help us, we've always been able to maintain that budget in an appropriate and a responsible manner. If the decision comes that this library needs to be closed because it cannot be handled, and that is the consensus of this body, I'm not going to buck with you all, I'm not going to fight with you all, because my concern is for Hammond and the citizens that we all serve. But as we said before, as my financial specialist, financial analyst, and bond counsel, representative from our leasing corp can come up and speak to you on this matter, it's more than this, much more than this. And again, I say to you that I know that the mayor is looking to possibly look at ways at which to pull this together, and if it's going to benefit or help or serve the community, let's go for it, but I don't think that you all have had the opportunity, number one, to visit the library, to talk to the constituents in the library, to find out what the staff do, I don't think that's been done yet. But if this is the consensus of this body, I want to do what's best for Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Banas.
Since I found out that the council was responsible for approving the budget for the Hammond Public Library, I attended one of the meetings that Ms. Greenleaf and Mr. White had at the library. I came away so confused from that meeting, because I discovered that there are so many layers involved in this decision. I spent the better part of a week speaking to other councilmen from other communities, I spoke with the DLGF, I spoke with the library, Lake County Library Association, I spoke with the local 1448 Council 62 of the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Union, I had no idea that the employees of the library belonged to a union. I also spoke to Lake County Councilmen. The only reason the library is before us for approval of their budget is because they are asking for more. Had they stayed level with what their budget was last year, there would have been no need for them to come before us. If I understand correctly, also, and, you know, I, I absorbed a lot of information in the last week, if the library board was elected as opposed to appointed, they wouldn't have to come before us. Now, being that this law became effective July 1st, that the library board would, or the library wouldn't need to come before us for approval of their budget, I don't think there was sufficient time to get the so-called ducks in a row, to investigate having an elected board as opposed to an appointed board, to see if there was a way that, and this was another thing I found out, that the Hammond Library is a Class A library based on our population. Because of that classification, they are required to have a certain number of employees with a certain level of education. If they fall below those required, that number of required positions, they, they would be penalized. They could lose up to $7,000 a month in money that comes from the state to maintain their T-lines for computers and telephones. Now, you know, did they have the opportunity to request a waiver on those requirements? I don't think there was sufficient time. I went back to the library a second time, spent Saturday evening there, and there is so much history in that, in that building, from the fact that the library was incorporated in 1903, they have the clock from GoBlacks hanging in the lobby, they have yearbooks from Hammond High going back to 1913. This is, this is all part of Hammond, this, we don't want our residents to lose that, believe me. When I was at the library Saturday evening, I got there about... When I was at the library Saturday evening, I got there about 4:00, every single public computer was in use. The parking lot was full. I recognize the need in the community. Everybody recognizes the need in the community. I don't think there was sufficient time to get the ducks in a row. The only reason that there has been discussion about the library perhaps closing is because of this bond that's out there. If I recall correctly, their payment is $500,000 a year on that bond. It's a $7 million bond. That's a lot of money. Is that correct?
Twice a year, a million.
Twice a year. So it's a million dollars a year. That's a lot of money. Everybody, we all hear that we need more, we want more. There is no more. I don't know how we can be any clearer about that. The 1-2-3 tax caps, and I've said this before, that were voted into law by three out of four people, voters in the state of Indiana. I don't think people realized what these tax caps meant. We're capped. We can't get anymore. We're at 2005 level here in the city of Hammond. Where are we supposed to get the money? But yet we hear candidates running for office or reelection, no new tax, no new tax, because they know that's what you want to hear. That's what you want to hear. No new taxes. But you know what? We're gonna have to give things up if you are not going to pay any more taxes. Do I want to pay more taxes? No, absolutely not. But do we want to keep police and fire? Do we want to keep our parks clean? We hear people complain all the time. Oh, well, the parks need to be mowed, they need to be trimmed. Do we want clean water? Do we want our basements to not flood? Do we want our library? We have to make up our mind. What do we want here? Where are we going to get the money? So it is up to everyone in the state of Indiana or in the city of Hammond to choose what is important to you. I can't make that choice for you. I need you to come to me and tell me. I was voted or elected to be your voice. I've made calls to residents in every single district. I've had conversations with them. Nobody came up with an answer. Nobody came up with an answer. This is extremely difficult. I have, I had quite frankly, a pretty crummy weekend thinking about this. There just isn't any more money. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hello, my name's Cornell White. I'm the financial analyst at Hammond Public Library. I just wanted to come and state that the reason why we're in here is basically the simple fact that we've had a $4 million budget since 2007, and I have the documents right here to state it and more documents to back up that this isn't phony. And we got chopped down to the quick for this year. We're right now running on empty, trying to bring that back up to a sustainable amount. That's all that we're here for. We have the tax revenues, we have the miscellaneous revenues to get that done. Now, if there's any way to become more efficient, I believe that that should be done within the year 2013 if you want to consolidate or anything like that. But we're right now saying that we need the, be able to, we need our budget in order to update our computers, which our telephone runs on. Now, libraries aren't just books. Mostly, the primary reason for them now is computers. Computers are what people need. We have 55% of the city of Hammond that uses the library, has a library card. We have an unemployment rate of 9.6%, let alone, I don't know how many high schools you have that are contingent upon, you know, they gotta do book reports and whatnot. You know, so we need the library. We're not saying that, we're not being, there's no greediness or anything. I can understand the ability to be more efficient, but I think we need to, I think time needs to be done where you have a business analysis or somebody to analyze and actually see, well, do we need the 3.7 million? Is that how much that our levy should be? Or are we wasting money by not being consolidated? And then, if we are, by how much? You know, that hasn't been spoken. We just know that that's a panacea to lower our budgets. What we need to do is actually get our heads together, be it me and Mr. Lindy here, whomever it is, our numbers people, and say, well, look, you know, if you were consolidated with Lake County or whomever else, how much money would you be saving if you got rid of this position, this position, this position? How many of those positions do you actually have? How much do those wages are? But we're not going to that. We're going straight to the quick and saying, well, look, you know, it's more, it's more efficient to have a consolidation, which we don't know if we can even get done, because we'd have to force that. And how long will that take? How long are we gonna have, how long will we be on 2012 budget? Will it be till 2013, 14, 15, 16 to get that done? Or will we be able to do this quickly in order to update, upgrade these computers? Because these computers are about to blow up. I mean, we need them. And I have the receipts and everything to show you how much it would cost to update our servers and our, everything that needs to be done, because all three of them are about to die. And I mean, it's not like we're coming up here asking for money for raises or anything like that. We're asking for money in order to keep that library functional. That's all I have to say.
Anyone else like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Janet Moran and I am the Secretary of the Hammond Public Library's Leasing Bond Corporation, which was formed in 2001, when the library did its remodeling and its expansion. And I feel that within the caucus room this evening that there was a sense of cooperation. We're gonna, all of us have, we all have, you know, we all have a dog in this race. We're all gonna have to sit down and really figure out and answer some very difficult situations. And Councilwoman Van Ness, your research and your extra work is so much appreciated. You've really done an outstanding job in trying to get down to the heart of the matter. Pardon me?
Give her a bow, sir.
You did an excellent job. But I will say that when you start comparing the branches of the Lake County Library and this main library that sits here in Hammond, this library that sits in Hammond is serving 80,000-plus population. The library, say for example, in Munster and Highland, they're serving 24,000 people. If you go into the Munster branch, the Highland branch, these are small operations. Go into the Munster library, they are, they have four computers. The Hammond Public Library has 58. But we have to have those according to the Indiana library, state library. We have certain, as stated, we have a certain number of equipment and personnel that we have to maintain. If we don't, we go on probation. And then if we're on probation for some member of time, then we just are closed. And I know that everybody in this room does not want the library to close. And so we are going to have to work very hard and be very open with one another to try to find a way to get through this. I think that Renee has said that, you know, the Hammond Public Library Board and we'll be sitting down with our bond counsel, umbugger, and some other people, that we can start looking at the ramifications of this bond. The bond's not gonna go away. The bondholders buy a bond in the marketplace and they expect to be paid. So anyway, I just want to say that I appreciate you hearing us and listening to all the ins and outs of this situation. And again, we'll hope to be meeting with you in the future.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak?
I'm sorry, I was late for the meeting and I'm not just sure what it's about, but I hear the library and I hear about money. I used to be president of-
Say your name and your address, sir.
My name is MacDaniel Adams. I own a home for the last 14 years, the 12, 14 years, the 15, 23 shell, and I'm a taxpayer of Hammond.
Thank you.
In Vogelton. And this is my library card right here. I use the library often, often. And I was president of the PTSA at Hammond High School for the senior year, but I had to have a five-bath pass and I had to give it up and I'm sorry I did. But I use the library an awful lot. And I don't know just what it's about and I'm very sorry. And I don't want you to chew your cabbage twice over, but I think it's about budgets and getting money for the library and making sure the library is there. But it's the kids who need it the most, and I hate to say that, and it's the truth. That library serves. If there's anything about them not having a budget, not being there, and I might be wrong, excuse me, then they're gonna hurt and they need it the worst of anybody. And we've got a bad enough problem and situation there with kids now being way behind and everything else, and it's pathetic. And I just hope in your heart, if that's the case about budgets, about where the money is, it's generally the schools, the libraries, and all the other programs that suffer in hard times. But if there's anything for the library, I sure wish you could find whatever it is that you have to do to do it. I wish I had an answer, but I, and I don't know what it's all about, but I had a feeling I was listening. I came here for something else. I just thought I'd put my two cents in because if people sit and don't say anything when things happen, and you didn't say anything, why didn't you just get up and say something? But anyway, thank you for your time.
Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Hicks.
Whichever the way the vote goes, I do and hold heartily say this sincerely, hope that the relationship with the library director and its staff is extended and everyone cooperates with the library board so that we can come to a solution in regards to this. And I know the mayor made it clear that he would work with them, but I know personally from knowing Ms. Greenleaf, that she's reached out to some of my colleagues and to no avail, they responded. And to me, that's just being, it's unacceptable to me. But I understand people's lives, you have things going on or whatnot, but it's a very vital and important issue that's gonna affect the lives of people for years to come. So the reality of it is, is that we all have a job to do and if you're sincere about what you do, you're gonna make a conscientious effort in regards to seeing what needs to be done.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
I want to start off and say, first off, I've gotten familiar with Renee Greenleaf over the years and I think she's a great person, very, you know, very intelligent. I think she does a fine job and she inherited a mess, a financial mess. I'll go on record saying that, because, you know, it's nothing because of her why we're in this position. I think that's me, I'm sorry. We're in this position because, as we indicated, the property tax caps and the frozen levies. So I wanted to start off and say that. I also want to point out that if we're gonna bring in people that are, you know, the library board's made up of seven appointees, all right? The civil city has two appointees. The council appoints one person and I appoint one person as mayor. School City Hammond appoints three people to this board out of seven, and the county, county council and county commissioner appoints two people to this board. So this isn't just a civil city problem, it's not just a library problem. Where's the county council? Where's the county commissioners? Where's the school city? County council, county commissioner, and school city compose five out of the seven members of the board, but they're not being approached and asked for money to help bail out the libraries? That's, there's something inherently wrong about that. We control technically two out of seven votes and yet we're expected to bail out the entire system. It's not fair. I mean, it's our job to watch out for the civil city, it's our job to protect the casino revenue, and if we are gonna work together to try to fix this problem, everybody that has a stake in this, you know, it's fun putting a member on the board, but when the bill comes due, they come to the civil city? That's not right. If we're all gonna work together and fix this, we need the school city in there, they got three of the seven, and we also need the county in there. That only makes sense.
Anyone else like to speak? Would anyone else like to speak on this issue? Hearing none, seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Number six, communications.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hicks.
Dear, receive a correspondence from the Hammond, Sanitary District of Hammond. This is Mr. Anthony Hicks, Third District Councilman, Hammond County Council, 5925 Cayman Avenue, Hammond, Indiana 46320. The letter dated September 4th, 2012, President O' Pinker, later dated July 24, 2012. Dear Mr. Hicks, this letter is going to address your letter of the Board of Works and the Council President O' Pinker's letter, Dr. Michael Erger. In response to your letter dated on 4/26/2011 to Joseph O'Connor, to the letter dated 12/19/2011, letter dated 1/25/2012, letter dated 3/14/2012, and now with your correspondence to the Board of Works and Safety, who has forwarded a copy of this letter to me, have already responded to you on 5/4/2011, 1/17/2012, 2/8/2012, 3/28/2012, and now in this correspondence. 9/10 Dracker was repaired on 1/17/2012 and turned over to the city engineer who agreed to have the area resurfaced as part of the street blacktopping project. Please refer your inquiries to your city engineer. 10/50 Dracker is the first inquiry to me in your reference to this address after inspection of the problem actually is at 10/48 Dracker, who has the issue with the own inner line that is causing decay, and the homeowner has been notified to call a plumber for repairs. I will include our code enforcement department with the response since this letter is private line issue. Scott E. Mitchell, Superintendent of the Sewer Maintenance. Just in regards to this correspondence, yeah, I sent several letters because the work wasn't getting done, and that was the purpose of me sending the continuous correspondence to the Sanitary and the Board of Works. And if there's a particular issue that affects my residents and my constituents, I will continue to send letters. And to me, the issue just needed to be addressed. And now, finally, finally now, the last two weeks, they finally resurfaced it, hadn't put the blacktop there, but finally resurfaced it so the blacktop can go down there so that someone doesn't ride down Dracker Street and all of a sudden just fall down in the sewer. So it's been ongoing for about two years, but finally I see some action. Thank you.
Any other communications? Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I would like to move that we suspend the rules in order for a gentleman from the military order of the Purple Heart who wants to address the council regarding an issue.
There's a motion on the floor to suspend the rules.
Second.
Second by Councilman Spitali, all those in favor?
Aye.
Rules are suspended.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name is John Mateko. I'm a member of the military or the Purple Heart. Is there anyone here who doesn't know what the Purple Heart is? Okay, that saves the paragraph. I'm here to ask you to please vote for the resolution designating that part of US 41 within the city of Hammond as a Purple Heart Trail. Purple Heart Trail is a national program. Every state has some road, highway, street in their boundary that has a Purple Heart Trail on it. If you approve this resolution, you will join Shererville, St. John, and Highland, and that'll pretty much lock up Lake County. Our chapter commander in Terre Haute is working with the city of Terre Haute. Our chapter commander in Vinsens is working with the city of Vinsens. When we get, if you do it, we'll have Lake County, Terre Haute, and Vinsens on Route 41. With that, I can go to the state legislature and ask them to do the whole, the whole state. I'd like to introduce two of my fellow patriots. Frank Garcia, Frank, could you stand, please? Frank's World War, World War I, yeah, right.
Ain't any of them love.
Frank's a Vietnam vet. Frank has held about every position in our state, Purple Heart organization, except commander- commanding had to step down because of family commitments, otherwise he'd be our current state commander. Victor Franco is our chapter sergeant-at-arms. He's also a state sergeant-at-arms. What we're asking you to do costs the city of Hammond nothing with one caveat. There's no, if you pass it, US forty-one comes out of Chicago on Indianapolis Boulevard. Then it turns south on Calumet, comes down to the expressway, runs east on the expressway, and goes south out of your city limits on Indianapolis Boulevard. No, there will be no change in Calumet Avenue, forty-one, Indianapolis Boulevard, the expressway. It's just your designation that yes, it is part of the Purple Heart Trail. The signs are about the size of a speed limit sign. It'll say Purple Heart and then it'll have image, an image of the entire metal, which is the ribbon and the middle, and then trail under it. We're talking with a corporate sponsor that has a retail outlet on Calumet Avenue or Indianapolis Boulevard in each of the four municipalities, if you need a hint during the grocery business. The caveat I spoke about, a small cost to Hammond, it would make more sense for us to turn the two signs over to your public works department as opposed to some of our members going out there with ladders and straps and screwdrivers and all that. We probably put them on the wrong poles and we put them either two feet too high, two feet too low, or twisted wrong. So, if one of your departments does it, it covers that. Are there any questions?
I think we can handle that, sir.
Okay.
Any questions?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I would just like to thank Mr. Mateko. He really expended a lot of energy. He has fifty-one signatures of Hammond residents that approve of the Purple Heart Trail coming through Hammond, and eventually it's gonna be a national road. I also, having served next to some men that receive Purple Hearts, I have a great deal of respect for anyone that's received a Purple Heart. It's one of the highest honors that can be bestowed on a military person. So, thank you, John. It's been nice working with you and the key thing you said, I think, for my colleagues is at no cost to the city of Hammond. Thank you.
Okay, sir, I didn't get all those signatures by myself. I had a lot of help getting them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
To make a motion, we refer back to the regular order of business. I saw a move.
The motion on the floor to refer back to the regular order of business, second by Councilman Hinoza, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Back to the regular order of business. Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications is now closed. Committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Council as a whole will be bringing out twelve-forty-eight.
Any other committee reports?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinoza.
Council as a whole will be bringing out twelve-forty-seven.
Any other committee reports? Committee reports is now closed. Number eight ordinance, third and final reading.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinoza.
I bring out twelve-dash-forty-seven for final passage.
Motion by Councilman Hinoza, second by-
Second.
Councilmen's, but tally, is there any discussion? Councilman Hinoza.
The reason I'm bringing it out, it looks like the votes are probably gonna be in favor of vote no on this. After hearing everybody from the library and visiting the library and looking at these old computers, I see, you know, all the things that need to be done at the library and of course there's a big need, very big need for this library. And I think that instead of, you know, if this gets voted down, I think the best thing for it to do is to get voted down and not stay in committee because if this reverts back to their original budget from last year, even if we vote no on this, the same thing is gonna happen and therefore so we don't have to leave this in committee. And then, you know, it can be off the committee for a whole year. I think we're better off just bring it out and let's vote for it. But hopefully, I think from the meeting that we had in the back, it looks like including with the mayor and the staff, we're gonna work closely with the library and do what we have to do to keep the library afloat because it is very, very much needed.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
We had some real, you know, heartening discussion back there and people coming forth and so forth and all of that. And you know, this is the first time that the council is doing this, that, you know, that they're coming before the council because of new state law, because they asked for an increase over the twenty-twelve budget. And like what lawyers do all the time when you have conflict or whatever, they always come to a compromise. I believe they're asking for three-point-six million from the two-point-six. So, I don't know what's gonna happen here, but you know what, I think everybody is sincere, the mayor's sincere, Janet did, you know, she's sincere about it, so are a lot of the other councilmen that went ahead and met with the library. And I don't know what's gonna happen, but I would think in all fairness that the council cannot increase that budget, but we can cut it. They've asked for three-point-six or is it three-point-eight million? So I would make a motion that we make the budget three-point-million as well as the, you know, with the mayor and the library working together and going downstate and working with the general assembly to see if we can go ahead and get that merged with the other Lake County libraries. I mean, at least we're giving them a chance, you know, to go that route and, you know, if it gets defeated, so be it. But, you know, at least I tried or whatever and I think we're all in this together, we're working for it and, you know, to ask for a million dollars is a lot. The library, we have to believe them someplace. They're saying that they do have the eight-hundred thousand, that they do have the money there. And, you know, at least we're not giving them the whole boat, but at least we're willing to work with them and give them some of it and see what happens. And that way, I think that shows a spirit of cooperation between all sides, that the mayor has gone on record and said that and so forth and all of that. And, I mean, if they need, you know, the eight-hundred thousand, you know, to increase their budget and they say they have the money, but we have to take their word and value at some point. And it's a tough decision. I think it's a hard decision for all of us to make. But we wanna make the right decision and then, you know, that's just the way it is. So I would make that motion that, you know, we make the budget three million dollars for
Any other discussion?
Motion on the floor, Mr. President.
So you got an amendment. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Hinoza to make the budget three million.
Mr. President.
Any discussion? Councilman Higgs.
Looking at their line items for their budget, I'm trying to see exactly if the financial consultant can step to the podium for me. You're asking for three-point-six million, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
And what was the total amount of expense thus far that you expended, or your expenditures for twenty, it's twenty-twelve, so it's twenty-eleven, I would say.
For twenty, for twenty, oh, you mean for twenty-eleven?
Yeah.
You mean what we asked for for twenty-eleven's budget or?
Twenty-eleven budget plus your expenditures. What did you spend in twenty-eleven?
In twenty-eleven, as of June thirtieth, half, we spent- See, I have the budgets. The budgets go up to the sixth month, the end of the sixth month.
Okay, so if you can't give me that as of today-
For twenty-eleven or right now?
As of-
You want me to go back a year back?
I asked you for twenty-eleven, you didn't give me that. Now I'm at twenty, now I'm thinking of twenty-twelve. Give me as of today, what's the total expenses that you spent?
For twenty-twelve, we are currently at-
Mr. Chairman. Councilman Markovich. I believe what you need to explain is that your budget goes from June, to June thirtieth.
Yes, we have.
And you may not have that information or whatever, so that needs to be explained, okay? I mean, to ask you for what twenty-eleven, you may not have that. But your budget cycle runs on that eighteen-month-
Eighteen-month cycle.
Correct.
I could tell you for this year, we're gonna burn all of our budget up. I mean, as far as my budget information, like I said, that's something I don't-
You're saying you've already exhausted all your resources.
By the end of the year, we'll exhausted all of our resources up and twenty thousand dollars more.
And that would be that last year you asked for two-point-six.
Last year is different because we had the libraries open, but as of last year, we had, we spent, it looks like- we're at, at half-year, we're at three-point-seven million for the half-year. So you can double that, that's how much we spent last year. But that's with those other two libraries open.
That's what the other two libraries opened, so now they're closed.
I could tell you the difference.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinoza.
At half, wait a minute, I'm like, Mr. President.
Go ahead, Councilman Higgs.
Stand at half, the year you spent total three-point-seven?
Last year, for two thousand eleven. This year, we're nowhere close.
But that's because you had the additional-
Those additional two libraries. And-
And I know the EB Hayward branch is fairly new. That branch ain't that old.
You had, you had like, what was it, thirty more employees, electric bills.
That was only my first summer job.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinoza.
I believe what we need to be looking here at is, what with three million dollars, and we got an amendment here for three million dollars instead of three-point-six, is there any other numbers that need to be changed, like the fifteen percent or the twenty percent? What else needs, is that a number that you can work with and what would that do to the library?
I think that will do the minimum, perhaps that can keep us open. To, that would get, that would perhaps get us the computers, I'll let computers fix with that two-hundred thousand dollars extra than what we have now. Does that make sense? If you give us three million dollars, right now we're at two-point-eight, that two-hundred thousand dollars may be able to, you know, help us out in two thousand-
So that wouldn't be a number that you can work with?
I mean, I'll take anything right now, but, yeah, I need the computers open.
Now, how does that, how does three million, how would that be versus this ordinance being voted down in its entirety and not passing at all, then going back to your twenty-twelve budget?
Going back to the twenty-twelve budget, we're burned. We have to update those computers by March. We have bonds that are contingent upon keeping those computers up date. If we don't have those that have the software and everything in compliance, we lose those bonds, which jumps our expenditures, expenditures up even higher. That's why we're, you know, we're burning daylight, we need to, we need to get it done by March. So, we have, so as soon as the new year kicks in, we get a new budget. I'm proposing that they start right away to upgrade those computers and the software. And to answer Higgs' answer to how much money we spent this year so far- we spent one-point-four-three-one as of June and we'll be at, right at, right at the borderline and so we'll be at two-point-eight by Christmas time. So we're right, what, what, the two-point-eight, what I'm saying is that two-point-eight is like bare minimum to keep everything going. There's certain maintenances, maintenance things, maintenance, cleaning, those computers are the big one because that's, you know, those are hundred-dollar hits. And that's just not in the proposal for this year, we aren't gonna be able to quote that.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President. Okay, so you're proposing that the budget increase by two-hundred thousand dollars, correct, Councilman Markovich?
I'm not increasing it, I'm cutting it from three-point-six to three million dollars. Somebody wants to make it three-point-one, three-point-two, whatever's workable for them. Like he said, he'll take any. I'm not increasing the budget, you're asking for three-point-six, so I'm cutting from three-point-six to three million.
One at a time.
All righty. If this budget is not approved by the city council tonight, the increase in budget, then it would revert back to the two thousand twelve budget, and am I correct in understanding that's two-point-eight? So, according to the discussions in caucus, we were on, there was an indication that we were on the same page to not approve the increase which would revert back to the two-point-eight. And now you're looking to increase that to an even three million dollars, which is two-hundred thousand dollars, and if I can figure, you know, somewhere around eighty thousand dollars would be an additional portion of the city of Hammond's contribution to that. May I ask Bobby Lindy, what are the, what's the total proposed raise for the city council Okay, if the, one percent across the board, is that correct for city?
For the city council, I believe it's approximately two-hundred-and-thirty dollars per councilperson, which is how we're approximately charging all the fees.
Mr. President.
I'm looking at, if you want to increase that, then the money's gotta come from somewhere, so maybe we should give up the proposed raises.
Mr. President.
Order, order, order. Councilman Higgs.
I think what Councilwoman Vines is trying to say and convey over to Bobby Lindy, our city controller, is that where would additional revenue come from and how much would come from each district council as well as the ten percent share?
It's not in the picture. It's not in the picture.
That's the question.
That's not a consideration. They don't tax them. They say they got the money.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
I think we all agree, none of us wanna see the library closed. But when I think about the makeup of the board, having seven people and only two of those are from Hammond, and the school city's three, and the- and only two of those are from Hammond, and the school cities, three, and the commissioners, two, aren't involved in any discussions about increases, I, I don't, I don't understand that. I don't know how we can be just a discussion about increasing the budget without their input, when their board outweighs the number we have, their, their members outweigh the number of members we have on the board. Now, in the room, there's almost a perception that if we stay at two point eight, that perhaps somehow the library will close in twenty thirteen. But then we heard from the financial analysts that that's bare bones to just kinda keep things going as they've been without improvements and potential of matching dollars perhaps. Now, we're all under those kind of constraints that if we had the dollars to match, we'd do more too, and the fact is, we just don't. So I don't know how we go forward with anything but a twenty twelve budget until we get all board members involved in the discussions about what to do for twenty thirteen, get on the same page and move forward from that point.
Point made very well, Councilman Kowinski. Any other discussion before we vote on this amendment?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hina Hosa.
I, I got a question for the, for the library board there. Um, at three million, at three, if, if, with this amendment for three million dollars, because it's not three point six, you would still have to come in front of the council here, any more monies that you receive from sales, from, uh, any of your buildings, you would still have to come back in front of the council to spend this money, is that correct?
Yes, that's what I'm trying to convey to you. We have a building that, you know, it's out there, and a couple of buildings out there, um, to be sold. If we sell those buildings, and we have the money for those buildings, and that money is in our bank account for those buildings, we cannot spend that money without your approval. So what we're asking you to do is to, um, approve the budget at the three million dollars, so that if anything else comes in for us, we can pull our own self up by our bootstraps. If you do not approve this budget, and you take us back to two point eight million, please forgive me. If you take us back to two point eight million dollars, we cannot pay for the computer services that we need. It is going to shut down the entire computer system. I have got to get those computers fixed. They are at least eleven years old. If the building sell, if Hayward sells, if Howard sells, that money comes back, and it can be placed in our operating expenses. But if you lock this budget at two point eight million dollars, I can't touch it. I have to come back to you to get an additional appropriation for, um, that year, and it's going to reduce the budget of the preceding year. In that caucus, and I need to make this clear, I wish the mayor were back in this room. I said to you, if you wanna sit down and talk about the consolidation of the library, I have to go back before my board to have that discussion. There was nothing that said, yes, I agree with what you wanna do, let's go for it, because I don't have that authority. I'm presenting to you what is necessary, what is needed. I have staff out here who can verify what is needed for this computer. We lost last year one point two million dollars. We serve a populace of eighty thousand people, and fifty-five thousand of those eighty have libraries.
Okay, Ms. Greenleaf, uh, I think them points were made. Um, I think it's time for a roll call vote on the amendment, Carmen.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
No.
Vines.
No.
Kelwinski.
No.
Salinas.
No.
Higgins.
No.
Emerson.
No.
Hina Hosa.
Yes.
O Pinker.
No. The amendment fails seven to two. Now, are we voting on twelve dash forty-seven as is?
Markovich.
No.
Spitali.
Have some clarification on this, please, on what are we voting for on this one?
Twelve forty-seven as written.
No.
Vines.
No.
Kelwinski.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
Can, uh, can we get clarification on it, what we're voting for?
The original ordinance as written, twelve dash forty-seven.
Uh-huh, and the bottom line on that one is?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgins.
I'm gonna help him out with this one. It would revert back to their previous budget, so it would simply go back. So you vote, if you vote yes, that means you're voting against it. If you vote no, that's a no.
And a no reverts to the twenty twelve budget.
That's correct.
We already did the amendment, we voted that down, it was seventy-two votes. Now we're going back to the original motion that's on the floor, which is, it would stay at what the previous budget is, because we're not, we're not gonna say yes to it. If you vote yes to it, you're saying yes to make it go increase. If you vote no, that means no.
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No.
Councilman Kowinski's vote is a no.
Salinas.
No.
Higgins.
No.
Emerson.
No.
Hina Hosa.
Yes.
O Pinker.
No. Twelve forty-seven passes eight in favor, or eight against, or fails eight against, one in favor.
Twelve forty-eight, in ordinance, amending ordinance numbers forty-six twenty-nine, forty-six fifty-three, forty-nine twenty-four, forty-nine sixty, seventy-five ten, seventy-five twelve, seventy-five forty-two, eighty-three fifty-two, eighty-four fifteen, eighty-five seventy-one, eighty-nine thirty-four, and ninety fifty-five, also known as section seventy-two point nine 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 of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to penalties for parking in the City of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, twelve dash forty-eight, um, this is an ordinance to increase the parking fines within the City of Hammond.
You have to amend that?
Uh, yes.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, yes. I would like to amend this, uh, everywhere under the penalty where it says, uh, thirty days, it will be changed to sixty days, uh, giving the, um, the person the opportunity to have sixty days to pay their fine, because sometimes the paperwork gets caught up in the clerk's office.
Okay, is there any discussion on the amended version for, first, uh, Councilwoman Vines, could I have a motion for the amended version to accept?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
It seems that there's some confusion between, uh, what was introduced last week and tonight. Uh, Clerk Golick last week, uh, just, uh, addressed twelve dash forty-eight.
That's correct.
Okay, so, uh, that's what my amendment is in regards to, and the twelve forty-eight A that was passed around that caucus last week is, is virtually what the, um, amendment is. So that's, I guess that's.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Hina Hosa.
We, uh, I, I, I believe Janet was trying to put twelve forty-eight A in there, but what we did last meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, we introduced twelve dash forty-eight and every, everything you, everything, and pass it. So everything that you want, you would have to amend in this twelve forty-eight dash A, or you can do it verbally and put everything, all your changes in twelve.
So I should just amend in twelve dash forty-eight? All right, there we go. So I retract my original request, and, um, I'd like to amend in twelve dash forty-eight A.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to amend twelve dash forty-eight A by Councilwoman Vines, second by Councilman Hina Hosa, is there any discussion? Any discussion on the amended version? Councilman Higgins, I could do that.
Please do.
Carmen roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Hina Hosa.
Yes.
O Pinker.
Yes, ordinance twelve forty-eight A passes nine to zero.
Mr. President. Yeah, we need to pass twelve forty-eight, twelve forty-eight as amended. A. Twelve forty-eight as amended, A.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Pass twelve forty-eight A as amended. Second. Second by Councilman Higgins. Carmen roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Hina Hosa.
Yes.
O Pinker.
Yes, twelve forty-eight A as amended passes nine to zero. And that ends our third and final passage readings. Number nine, introduction of ordinances.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I, oh, Carmen has to leave it, don't they?
Yes, she does.
Twelve forty-nine, an ordinance fixing the salaries and wages of all city officials and employees of the City of Hammond, Indiana, other than those fixed by statute or by ordinance heretofore enacted, and fixing the effective date thereof.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading, refer to council as a whole on October twenty-second, with the public hearing on October twenty-second.
Second.
It's motion by Councilwoman Vines, uh, second by Councilman Hina Hosa. All those in favor? Opposed?
Twelve fifty, an ordinance fixing the salaries and wages of all policemen and firemen of the City of Hammond, Indiana, other than those fixed by statute or by ordinance heretofore enacted, and fixing the effective date thereof.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
I move that twelve dash fifty pass through first and second reading, and be referred to council as a whole with a public hearing on ten twenty-two twelve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kowinski, second by Councilman Spitali, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twelve fifty-one, an ordinance fixing the salaries for elected city officials for the City of Hammond, Indiana, commencing January first, twenty thirteen.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
I move that that, twelve dash five one pass through first and second reading, and be referred to council as a whole with a public hearing for ten twenty-two twelve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kowinski, second by Councilman Spitali, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twelve fifty-two, an ordinance to appropriate monies into the twenty-twelve gaming fund.
Have a motion?
Which one is it?
Twelve fifty-two.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hina Hosa.
Yeah, move for first and second reading of twelve dash fifty-two, and set a public hearing for ten twenty-two twelve, and put in council as a whole.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hina Hosa, second by Councilman Salinas, all those in favor?
Aye.
First and second?
No discussion on the first and second?
Yeah, there is.
Okay, any discussion? Any discussion?
Mr. President, since we're in discussion, I guess I'll ask Bobby. I see all the districts basically, except the fourth and third, have additional appropriation from last year. What happened to my money?
You spent it all. No money left over. Can you help me out with that?
I can't help it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twelve fifty-three, an ordinance creating a new section of chapter one oh one, Streets and Sidewalks, to provide information to Hammond residents on city road projects.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I move that twelve fifty-three go to first and second reading, and refer to council as a whole at our next meeting, twenty-second.
Motion by Councilman Emerson, second by Councilman Spitali, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twelve fifty-four, an ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the City of Hammond for zoning purposes and amending ordinance number eighty-five fourteen, an ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the City of Hammond, including the regulations and maps to administer a zoning plan in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan as amended for property commonly known as twenty-one thirty-eight through twenty-one forty-eight Indianapolis Boulevard.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
I move that twelve dash five four pass through first and second reading, and be referred to council as a whole, and that we issue a notice of intent to consider for ten twenty-two twelve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kowinski, second by Councilman Spitali, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twelve fifty-five, an ordinance, amending ordinance numbers sixty forty-nine, seventy-four seventy-two, eighty-six twenty, eighty-six thirty-eight, and eighty-six sixty-nine, also known as section thirty-seven point zero two zero of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to required updates to the Hammond Personnel Policy Manual.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
I move that twelve dash five five pass through first and second reading, and be referred to council as a whole.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilman Kowinski, second by Councilman Higgins, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second carries.
Twelve fifty-six, ordinance authorizing the City of Hammond, Indiana to issue its economic development revenue bonds, series twenty-twelve potash project, and approving other actions in respect thereto.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Move that twelve fifty-six move through first and second reading, and refer to council as a whole at the next meeting.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Kowinski, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second carries. That concludes all the introduction of ordinances. Number ten, resolutions.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I might be out of turn. I'm sorry, I apologize.
Twelve R twenty, a resolution recognizing and designating a Purple Heart Trail within the city limits of Hammond, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
Uh, I move that we pass, uh, twelve R twenty.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor for final passes of twelve dash, twelve resolution twenty, second by Councilman Salinas, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgins.
Could you please add me as a sponsor of that particular ordinance?
I'd like to add my name also. I think everyone would like to add their name on that resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any other discussion? Carmen roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Hinajosa.
Yes.
Oh Pinker.
Yes. Resolution passes nine to zero. That concludes all of our resolutions. Number eleven, new and unfinished business.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
I'd like to make a motion that we cancel our Monday, October eighth, meeting, being that that's a legal holiday, and have one meeting for the month of October, that being on Monday, October twenty-second, scheduled at the regular time.
Yeah, there's a motion on the floor for one meeting for next month, uh, because of the holiday, which will be October twenty-second, second by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Uh, when you approached me about that, I'm just concerned that the bill is not a problem.
I spoke with, uh, Controller Lindy, and everything would be fine with that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote on the motion.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Hinajosa.
Yes.
Oh Pinker.
Yes. Motion passes nine to zero. Okay, on our new unfinished business, we also have a appeal of a denial of a contractor's license.
Got new, new and unfinished business.
Yes, it's under new and finished business. State your name and your, what you do, sir, and who you're here to represent.
Eric Olden Clark, attorney at law. I represent Lemuel Williams, Jr., who is the owner of the Storm Damage Professionals.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Seeing that this is a first occurrence with the council, I guess we just need to get a sense of direction on which way we want to go. I think we, I talked to Attorney Cantor, who's been very helpful in, uh, getting nine twenty-seven even torn down, uh, in regards to this particular issue, and I think they can work something out, uh, um, in terms of trying to come to an agreement. My question would be asked, Berger, do we need to actually vote this up or down?
The ordinance says that the appeal goes from the board to the council, so I think it is the duty of the council to e- either say that the board was right, that it was wrong, or modify the thing. So, I think the council should act. But, you know, if, if the council wants to postpone it, and it's agreed by the parties, I don't see any objection to that. Otherwise, I would just suggest that each party present their side of the case to the council, and the council can decide what to do.
I, uh, Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I think they, uh, are working together, so I'll make a motion to postpone this to our scheduled meeting.
Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Salinas. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Uh, if, if I am understanding this correctly, this gentleman is a contractor. Uh, he is doing work outdoors. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
Yes.
If we delay this vote, uh, it's going to, uh, you know, delay him getting back to work because of weather.
That's correct.
If that is the way that we choose to vote.
Mr. President. Mr. Chairman. Mr. President.
Councilman Salinas.
Uh, I'll retract my second.
Okay, the second's been retracted.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Spitali.
Uh, because there is an issue here, we do need to have both sides give their speech this evening, so the board knows what's going on.
Yes, we will do that.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Uh, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but I thought that the attorney and counselor Cantor were supposed to get together and talk about this, and, you know, about the ordinances and so forth and all of that. Now, you know, and we have some discussion here and find out what's going on, because this is, you know, first time to our attention, and it's, it's my understanding that, uh, the attorney for Mr. Williams or whatever, talked to Mr. Berger, and hopefully, I think you're involved, and let's see what's going on here.
Mr. President, nobody actually spoke to me about this until this afternoon, this, you know, at the caucus. Um, I'm happy to do whatever the council wants to do. If the council wants to wait a month, and, well, it's basically a month. If the council wants to wait a month and hear it then, with a possible resolution in the meantime, that's fine. If the council wants, um, Kurt Cook Building Commissioner to give his side of the story, that's fine too. It's whatever the council votes.
I think we're, I think we're here now. We should hear it now.
Yes, I do.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
You know, if, if this is postponed, and, and the attorneys agreed that they were gonna talk, that this can go back to the contractors' board, and something can be situated, taken care of, or they're, they're gonna meet a lot sooner before we meet.
We will meet October first, Mr. President.
That's, that's what I'm saying. This could be res, taken care of October first, and then, if they can't come, then, then it's coming to the twenty-second. But this could be all straightened out at the next contractors' board. I mean, that's my understanding.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
During caucus, I think we were under the impression that they were gonna get back together. There was some information that Attorney Carr had requested he didn't receive, miscommunication, whatnot. So, I was under the impression that this was gonna be tabled, and they were gonna give, give each other an opportunity to discuss the issue, and then if they needed to come back before this body, we would deal with the issue. That's what I.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Attorney Cantor, if it's discussed this evening on both sides what the issues are, do we have to make that decision tonight on the vote, or do we get a chance to think about it and come back at the next meeting?
I suppose if you wanted to take it under advisement, the ordinance doesn't say, uh, how much time you need to, to rule, but once you do hear the evidence, we probably wouldn't be doing any further discussion between the parties, 'cause then it'd be just waiting your decision.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Being that all the parties are here tonight, why don't we move forward, since it was on the agenda?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
That was not what was discussed in caucus. We did not say that we were gonna discuss that on the floor. What we said is they were going to table it and give attorneys the opportunity to discuss it. But if you, you guys wanna push the issue and change the story here, that's fine.
Mr. President.
But that is not what was discussed.
Councilman Hinajosa.
I believe, I believe in the back, the, the attorney re, uh, has some information that I requested that he still doesn't have. Is that, is that what you don't have, uh?
Well, the, we have requested information from the city, um, which we have not received, but more importantly, um, if there's going to be a, um, a hearing, or a hearing of an appeal, I think at the very least that the council should have before it those sections of the code which we are talking about. Otherwise, um, I don't think we would get a, um, uh, I don't see how it could be a fair hearing, because you're simply listening to my interpretation of the ordinance, the city's interpretation of the ordinance, and it's up to you to make a decision as to, um, what your ordinance says. I mean, I can read the ordinance into the record. Um, I don't know who's gonna remember all of those sections past the first three words, but, um, um, there has been such a delay at this point that, um, you know, I think, you know, we came here tonight not knowing what to expect or what the procedure would be. I have tried to find out what the procedure is, and, um, the ordinance does, all the ordinance says is if, if it's denied, it goes to the council, and that's it. Doesn't even say the time period for what's the appeal. Um, I found out from the clerk how many copies I was supposed to provide, and, um, and, and nobody really knew what else to do. So, um, um, I, I would just like the council to, uh, and I don't have copies for everyone tonight of the, uh, ordinances in question. It's just two ordinances in question. Um, excuse me, uh, one fifty point zero two six and one fifty point zero one eight. Uh, and zero one eight has, um, uh, six subparts that we're gonna be talking about. E, one through four, F, one through eight, and then, of course, there is, uh, G, which is the, um...
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
It, it seems to make sense to me that, uh, and I can't believe I'm saying this, that Bob's idea may be valid here, to let the attorneys talk and to come back to us with more information about what this involves, so we can make, if we're needed, to make a ruling, because there isn't some sort of decision made, to make a, uh, decision based on more information.
That sounds good. You folks get together for the next contractors' meeting.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
So, my original motion, which was been on the floor, and we've had discussion, which we were out of order, was to...
No, you weren't out of order, because Councilman Salinas rescinded his second.
Right, but there's still a motion on the floor, so we need a second to the motion.
Second.
Okay, it's second by Councilman Hinajosa. Is there any discussion?
What's his motion?
This is, uh, uh, this motion is for them to take it to the contractors' meeting on the first, have their discussion there, and then bring it to us on the twenty-second. Is there any discussion?
That was Bob.
You have all that, Carmen. Okay, Carmen, roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Hinajosa.
Yes.
Oh Pinker.
Yes. Motion passes nine to zero. Any other new and unfinished business?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Uh, being that it's going to be a couple of weeks before, uh, we meet again, I wanted to announce some crime watch meetings for those of us who choose to do good in our community. Harrison Park will meet on Wednesday, October third, uh, at the VFW on Holman Avenue. Uh, Edison Community Watch will meet also on October third, six thirty PM at Edison School. Indy Elite Crime Watch will meet on, uh, October eleventh, seven PM at the First Methodist Church on Holman Avenue. Wedding Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet on Thursday, October eleventh, six thirty PM at, uh, Calumet College. East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will meet on Tuesday, October sixteenth, six thirty PM at the Ophelia Steen Center. Hessville Crime Watch will meet Thursday, October eighteenth, seven thirty PM at, uh, the Gene Shepherd Center. And the South Hammond Crime Watch will meet on Thursday, also October eighteenth, seven PM at the Hammond Housing, Housing Authority Building. And, uh, I look forward to seeing all of you. Thank you.
Any other new and unfinished business? New unfinished business is now closed. Public expression. I'll call your name if you're on the list, sir. What's your name, sir? I will call you when it's your turn, sir. Jim Nowacki.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Jim Nowacki, and I resident of the city of Gary. However, I do own property in the city of Hammond, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to address the council tonight. I was particularly moved by comments made earlier, uh, by, uh, patrons from the library system, director of the library, and, and others discussing, um, the, uh, discussing the financial challenges that, uh, are being faced at the library board because of, uh, uh, budgetary problems in the city, and I know that cities all over Lake County and the county itself are, uh, experiencing some of those same challenges. One of the, one of the reasons I'm, uh, I'm here tonight is I've seen the, uh, problems that TIF districts create. A lot of times, we think of TIF districts as economic development, when in fact, uh, most research shows how disastrous the abuse of TIF districts are in municipal budgets. Uh, city of Gary is a good example of TIF districts gone awry. City is riddled with TIF districts, and millions upon millions of dollars get captured in those TIF districts. Doesn't just affect the city that authorizes those TIF districts. TIF districts capture all of the tax money that would be distributed to, uh, the civil city and other taxing units, including the county, and, uh, any other, uh, of the taxing units that would be affected by normal taxation. The, uh, an issue will be coming up before the council at the next meeting regarding a TIF district and the use of those TIF district funds to, uh, finance a, uh, bond issue for the Potash Corporation. Uh, I'm going to be, uh, I'm, I'm not familiar with the procedures of the Hammond City Council, and I've apprised myself that there is a, uh, a committee meeting or a caucus meeting that will, uh, occur before the next meeting, and I hope that I'll be able to attend that and get more information on it. But I would just want to bring to the council's attention some salient points regarding the Potash Corporation.
You have three minutes, sir. Your time's up.
Well, thank you very much for this opportunity.
Next speaker will be Pat Derning. Cornell White. Andy Young.
Good evening, council. Want to speak on the Potash bond issue. Only when businesses or developers have something unique to offer this community should this community so readily and willingly open up their checkbooks to them. When communities are weighing whether or not to engage in this type of corporate welfare that costs the taxpayers, they should have an established form of criteria by which to evaluate them. There should be a checklist with a fairly long list of requirements, next to little boxes which get checked if the prospective business or development meets enough of the community's criteria for desirable development. At least it is desirable enough to support financially and to offer other significant incentives. At or near the top of the list should be how many jobs it will bring the area. Right alongside should be how it will add to the city's tax base, or will it generate a lot of new sales tax revenue. There may be farther down the list, questions like, will it be considered an amenity, or is it in the best interest of the physical health of the residents of the community? Or will it add much commerce to local economy? Then on the other side of the page, there should be a checklist that has little boxes for negative aspects of a project, such as, will it add traffic congestion? Or will it add more rail traffic at great, at great crossings? Or will it pose a potential health risk to area residents? Now, if you have to review of this proposed development, the first column of boxes has a lot of little check marks, and the second column of boxes doesn't have any little check marks, then this might be a project for a community and its leadership to support in some way, though not automatically in any financial capacity. But if instead, the first column had no boxes checked, but the second column did have a lot of boxes checked, this would certainly seem to be reason enough not to throw all sorts of financial support behind the project. It may not be reason enough to reject the project altogether, but it would seem to be reason enough not to support it financially. In the case of this particular project, the only support from the city of Hammond that this developer should have had requested was for permission to build it here. They had a lot of nerve asking for all the other things that this totally compliant administration has given them. And it seems to go without saying that it took a heck of a lot more nerve for this administration to capitulate to all their demands. There are very few, if any, other places in the Midwest where this company could have located this proposed facility. So, I would ask at this time, why exactly did this administration support this project, seemingly with all the might it could muster? It wouldn't have any boxes checked in the first column, the good column, but it would have every box checked in the second column, the bad column. the bad column. At its worst, there may have been some shady backroom deals made. At best, this is an example of how poor in the negotiation skills are of everyone involved in this deal that ostensibly worked so feverishly on behalf of the citizens and taxpayers of Hammond. But I guess that doesn't take fully into consideration all of the other benefits that some individuals were able to milk out of this deal. Even on a deal like this, it may not yield any direct benefits for the city itself. There are a lot of consulting contracts and legal work and costs related to the issuance of this very bond issue, and also to include, but not be limited to, various political benefits. So, while this or another deal may not be good in the least for the city itself, or the taxpayers, or the citizens, it may be found to be very good for a particular clique of individuals. Communities like Hammond and Gary have to realize that they both have some very special attributes to offer certain, to certain types of business and industry. They both have very desirable locations, and they are so well-served by rail and highways. They surely should not overlook their proximity to Chicago. Additionally, they should both, they both have unique and irreplaceable infrastructures, especially when it comes to sewer systems and water creeks. And because of these and numerous other attributes, not the least of which is an able-bodied and available workforce, there is no reason to give away the store. To the contrary.
All right, sir. Your time's up. Deanna Miranda.
Hello, my name is Deanna Miranda, and I live on the 1400 block of Truman. I'm here to speak on the Potash, the Potash storage project. Unfortunately, this is the first I've heard of the issue, so please excuse my tardiness in voicing my opinion on this ongoing project. Potash seems to only be toxic if you come into contact with it or when ingested. Some of the hazards include irritation to the skin, eyes, and respiratory tract, and is harmful if swallowed. People can experience coughing, shortness of breath, and the treatment of first, or first aid measure of these symptoms are to move to fresh air. How can we move to fresh, to a fresh air zone if we live in the area which is infected? I believe the consistency of the substance is, is fine white granules. I'm also aware that this substance needs to be kept in a tightly closed container. Now, I've gone to the beach and I've picked up granules of sand and seen it run through my fingers like water. What are the plans for containment of the substance? If it does seep into our land or become airborne, what will it do to the vegetation, water pipes, water supply, wildlife? What will it do to my children? Right now, there doesn't seem to be any airborne exposure limits established. How can we ensure that this granular substance will not become airborne ineffective if there aren't any tests or limits put into place? We're already exposed to all of the toxins in the air from the factories in this area. Do you really think it's okay to add on another potentially dangerous chemical? I personally don't, and I know many of the people here tonight feel the same way. Thank you.
Cynthia Lopez. Cynthia Lopez.
I too just found out this afternoon.
State your name and address, ma'am.
Cynthia Lopez, 1512, Michigan, Hammond. I too just found out about this Potash deal, and, uh, obviously I agree with everything that Ms. Miranda just said. I, I, you know, I, I really upset about it, palled by it. Just bought my house here a year ago, only been here a year. My house is already underwater, and that's okay. I'm happy, happy to be here, not happy with the situation. It's all I can say.
Thank you. Antoinette Salas.
Hi, my name is Antoinette Salas. I live on the 1400 block of Truman. I just want to say, please don't go forward with this project. Um, you're going to force a lot of people to try and sell their homes or ask for, for the city to buy our property because I don't want to live in an area that might be in, I might be in danger of my life or my grandchildren's life. Please, don't go ahead with this project. That's all I'm asking. Or at least give us more information or something. But from what I've heard about this Potash deal, it's not good. Please, for the city, please, I'm speaking for Hammond. Please.
Thank you. Josephina Hilstrom. Josephina Hilstrom. There, Josephina.
My name's, uh, Josephina Hilstrom, and I understand the neighbors, they already passed over here. I got the same feeling about that. We don't need something like this. I live over here for, like I said, about more than 30 years, and I don't want to move to a different place. I don't want to lose my house, and I live in the back. When they go on and put whatever going and putting there, will you please, like my neighbor said, please don't do it because I need my house. And we all need our house. And we sell our house. Nobody else going and buy the house, and it's got a problem like this. So, we're going to lose the house. We're going to lose the place too, where we're supposed to. Will you please help us? Because we are in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. McDaniels Adams.
Now, I had a piece of paper put in the brochure in my mailbox about this Potash. I don't know what it is, but it doesn't take a brain surgeon and any city department to figure it out. If it's bad for the people, if there's been any tests on it, it's kind of stupid. It's kind of dumb. And if we, as the people, put up with it, it's pathetic. I would like to know when the next meeting is going to be on it.
October 22nd.
October 22nd. Okay, this is the thing. Say if there's nothing wrong with it. Say that it's fine. One, how many employees? How many employees from Hammond? How much revenue coming from Hammond, from the tax revenue, if there's any? How much money spent in the business in Hammond and toxic fumes from the product to the city? What's going to, how is the city going to be affected? And if anybody in this city can pass something where that's going to affect the people, they gotta be kidding. They really gotta be kidding, and it won't be the last that I'm going to hear. I'm going to take it, because I won't, and I don't live far from it. I won't take it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. George Stoya. All right, that concludes our speakers for the night.
Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I have.
Councilman Salinas.
Can we go back to the, um, new unfinished business?
The motion to go, uh, back to new unfinished business. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, just real quick, like, uh, Mr. Chairman, I got the floor. Thank you.
Councilman Salinas.
Thank you. Um, the residents that just came up here for the Potash, October 22nd, Potash, um, representatives will be here, and they can answer some of your questions. Okay, so same time, 6 o'clock, October 22nd, okay? Thank you. Right there.
Motion to adjourn. Motion by Councilman Kowinski, second by Councilman Spitali. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion adjourned.